Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023 Meeting of the Cupertino Planning Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Recording in progress.
Oh, let me, welcome everyone to the 2023, May 23rd Meeting of the Planning Commission. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Linskog?
Here.
Commissioner Feng?
Here.
Commissioner Mistri?
Here.
Vice Chair Mari Patla?
Here.
Chair Scharf?
Here. Okay, so our first item of business is to approve the April 25th Planning Commission Minutes. If you can all take a look at those minutes and someone can make a motion to approve them. Madam City Clerk, is, are there any public comments for the minutes? No.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
No public comment, Chair.
Yeah, let me also check, what about anyone on Zoom?
And I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Hmm?
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, great. Okay, I'll second the motion. Can we have a, oh, we can vote with our lights. I forgot about that. Okay. Please vote with your lights. Lenny?
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we are, Madam City Clerk, any postponements?
No postponements, Mr. Chair.
All right, we are on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda. Speakers get three minutes, and in most cases, state law will prohibit the Commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. So I have one blue card here. Welcome Jennifer Griffin.
Good afternoon, good evening, Planning Commission. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. Something I wanted to talk about today, which actually just came up, was, as you all know, San Jose is proposing to put a, another Costco at the West Gate West Shopping Center at Lawrence and, oh my God, what road is that? Prospect, I guess, just down a couple of blocks from this project. And I was over there today, and I'm very concerned about the parking issue. As you all know, we like, you know, I almost called it Gemco. Boy, that goes back to Cupertino. Costco very much, we have membership, but I don't think that this is an appropriate place for Costco. We have one down Lawrence, there's one by the airport, there's many in this area. I certainly don't, I have shopped at West Gate West for many years, and as I understand, there are three owners of this property. It's kind of constrained back there. As you go into the Sprouts, I think you get into the back area, which is another owner. And yes, this is West San Jose, but I shopped there. I have shopped there since I moved into Cupertino area when it was in the county in the 80s. And it's just a run-up Lawrence for me. But I'm concerned because it sounds like they're going to close the middle building in the West Gate West, close to Lawrence, and that is taking out a Pampf-Sutter medical facility. It's also taking out the FedEx, and I think it was a ballet studio. I'm really concerned because it's the second time that we've lost small businesses. You all may remember Schroder's haircut stuff. When, when that owner bought the property, I think eight years ago, there were five businesses that were forced out. We're losing, I mean, losing a Sutter-Pampf medical facility there, that's to put in a Costco? What rationale is that? We're also losing the other grocery store that's next to the, the, I don't know, there's one my husband loves, that's right down there by the, around at the corner. And then I'm also concerned that the parking overflow is going to slap over into the other property. It's going to go into the neighborhood behind there, which is on Graves Avenue, which, believe it or not, the Graves family from the other side of Saratoga owned this property in the 1860s. And we're going to have spillover parking into the other part of West Gate West, which is where the beauty, I go to that beauty salon, the Bank of America, Sprouts is in there. It's already tight, dangerous parking. And I believe there's a dental facility behind it. You're going to have Costco customers parking all over there. I'm worried about the traffic on Lawrence, too.
Thank you, Jennifer. Madam City Clerk, are there any Zoom calls with oral communications?
Yes, Chair, I see one hand raised on Zoom by Jean Beduard.
Okay, welcome Jean, you have three minutes.
Sorry, I actually see a couple more. There you go, I allowed her to speak.
Okay, go ahead, Jean.
I'm sorry, I didn't really intend to speak. I do support this project, but this was muted at the beginning, so we lost about five minutes. So, thank you.
Okay.
Shall I go to the next person, Chair?
Oh, there's another, okay, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yes, so we have two more hands raised, Peggy Griffin and Andrea.
Okay, welcome Peggy to oral communications.
Good evening, Chairman Scharf, Planning Commissioners and staff. I want to talk about VAALCO. The residents are pleased the contaminated soil at the site west of Wolf is going to be removed, but we are all concerned about how that's going to happen and who is going to monitor it. I was, I'm requesting a couple things. One, if the city, maybe the Planning Commission could have a study session or an agenda item that just goes over the steps of how all the contaminated soil is going to be removed and the contamination mitigated. And the second request is, we're concerned that the soil doesn't end up in the proper disposal site. So if it could, if each truck hauling away the contaminated soil could have a geotracker on it or a tracking device and someone, third-party, nonpartisan, be responsible for monitoring the logs on a weekly basis or a daily basis and providing those publicly so that people who really know how to read all that stuff can figure it out, I think it would reassure people that the contamination is actually going to be addressed and addressed properly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Peggy. So, City Attorney, who would be appropriate to have a study session like that on the proper disposal of the contaminated soil? Is that City Council or Planning Commission or City Manager?
I think I would recommend she contact the City Manager, who's director to the staff, who could probably work out these issues with her.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
And so we have one more hand raised from Andrea.
Okay, welcome Andrea to oral communications.
Hello, I think, oh, hello, hi, thank you. Thank you, Senator Cupertino, Planning Commission staff. Hi, I'm here on behalf of California Office of Traffic Safety, CalOTES, and also the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans. I just wanted to briefly remind all residents of the importance of GO Safely California, the education program from CalOTES and Caltrans that promotes a safety culture where everyone can, quote, "go safely," end quote. Following the safety rules of the road can save lives for all drivers, bicyclists, and pedestrians, and I just have three brief statistics to share. First one, 10% of all drivers under the age of 20 were involved in fatal crashes and were reported as distracted at the time of the crash. Two, pedestrian fatalities accounts for nearly 25%, one quarter of all roadway deaths in California. And the last statistic, no state has more pedestrian deaths on its roadways than California. And more information is available on goesafely.ca.org. It's available in English and Spanish, it's also accessibility-friendly as well. Would I share more, to share more details, would it be to the City Council Planning Commission email or would it be to the City Manager Office? Thank you.
Okay, I think you can send it to all three of those. Okay, thank you. Is that anyone else?
I see no more cards or hands raised.
Okay, great, so that ends oral communications. Any written communications other than what we've already received in our emails?
No, Chair.
Okay. Nothing on consent. We are on to Item 2, Public Hearing. Consider a proposed mixed-use development with 34 residential units, 7,595 square feet of commercial space, and the removal and replacement of 51 development trees. Application number TM 2021-003, ASA 2021-004, DP 2021-002, U 2021-001, TR 2022-006, EA 2022-005. The applicant is Carlos Chan, Prospect Ventures LLC. The location, 1655 South Deanso Boulevard, Assessor Parcel Number 36610-061 and -126. So can we have a staff report, please?
Actually, I had a very, very brief comment. At the time when this item was agendized, I did receive a notification from the staff looking at the proximity of my home to the proposed project. I'm actually right, the state of California has laws about conflict of interest. At a distance of 500 feet or less, you're presumed to have a conflict of interest. Would not participate at greater than 1,000 feet, you're presumed not to have a conflict of interest. I happen to live in the area between 500 and 1,000 at about 960 feet from the edge of the property. I contacted the FPPC for informal advice on the previous findings that they had had in these cases, and it didn't appear that I have a conflict for a number of reasons. For that reason, I am not accusing myself of this, but participate in the hearing tonight.
Okay, great, thank you for telling us that. Okay, I guess we're ready for the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission, Pugh Gosh, Planning Manager. I'd like to introduce John Martier, Senior Planner, who has been reviewing this project quite diligently since, for a couple of years now. On to GP.
And I think I'm also the third planner on this project as well, too, but, you know, but thank you, Pugh, for the, for the great introduction. Again, I'm John Martier, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department, Plan Division specifically. I think my, yeah, the presentation's up, and again, not to reread what Chair Scharf had, had written already, read already, but what the project is and what the applications are. Again, adoption of mitigation, negative deck, declaration, as well as variation of permits, including development permit, architectural site approval, use permit, vesting tentative map, as well as a tree removal permit. Project location, this is one of the ones that in my career has seen the greatest mixed uses as well as vicinity to multiple jurisdictions. So the 1655 South Deanso, you know, internally we call it the Coach House site because that's the most well-known business on the property and how we talk about it in shorthand. Yeah, Coach House site, how's that going? So this has been a shopping center probably since the 1960s, I believe, approximately 11,000 square feet, mostly single-story, although there is a rear portion that does have a second-story mezzanine that's adjacent to the liquor store and I believe the sushi restaurant as well. It is bordered by a number of uses, as well as the city of San Jose to the east, as well as the city of Saratoga to the south. Some of those uses include single-family residential on the western edge, as well as office uses, which include the city's, the West Valley Sheriff's Station to the north. To the east, in San Jose is retail, as well as gas station uses, and to the south is single-family, some higher-density housing, as well as retail and gas station uses to the south. It's one of the few, and, you know, on the Saratoga side of Prospect, you do have a medical office and another gas station to the south of that, too. It's one of the few remaining four corners that have, used to have, you know, gas station each corner at one time. In the general plan, this is considered the South Deanso special area, and it is part of a conceptual plan called the South Saratoga-Sanvill Road Conceptual Zoning Plan, which I think dates to the late 70s. So some of the project data, there's three residential, commercial buildings. Building A, which is the one that's asking for the two waivers, is the three-story building with 23 apartments and approximately 7,500 square feet of ground for retail, commercial space. Building B is the three-story, is on the western edge, whereas Building A is right along, adjacent to South Deanso Boulevard. Building B has a three-story townhome structure with four residences. Building C is the other three-story townhome structure with seven residences, so in total you have 23 apartments as well as 11 townhomes. 51 on-site tree replacements for the 51 protected development trees proposed to be removed or located, relocate, excuse me for that. And the vesting tentative map has subdivided the two existing properties, are two parcels, and those will be subdivided into 12 parcels, 11 of those being the townhome and the other one being the mixed-use higher-density apartment complex. So here's the site plan with, just showing the roof, so just to give you an idea what building is what. So again, Building A, Building B, Building C. Density bonus to waiver requests. In conformance with the city's municipal code, this, the requirement at the time of application was 15%. Of course, that has changed since after this, the application of this, but, so, at the time, it was the 15% was a requirement for BMR. The applicant is proposing to add one median income-for-sale unit, one low-income rental unit, and three very low-income rental units. Well, you can see the percentages on the right, right here, where the very low-income units make up about 12% of the development units. So the, the density for the site, per the general plan, is about 15 dwellings per acre. The density bonus does allow for, again, as the name of the chapter of the municipal code alludes to, allows for higher density. When, when calculating the higher density, the applicant has to choose from one of the income categories, income levels to base their, their density bonus on. So in this case, the greatest return is through the very low-income level, and so as they have 12% of their development, 12%, 12% of their base density as a, as very low-income, they are allowed to use a 35% density bonus, so which allows them nine marker rate units in addition to the base density of 25. The total is 34 units. So although they are required to provide 15% BMR, with the extra very low-income unit, they are providing a total of 20% BMR units on site. So the applicant may request waivers or reduction of development standards that will have the effect of physically precluding construction of a density bonus development. So there's two waivers that they're requesting, and both of them are for Building A. The general plan allows in this special area a height of 30 feet. Building A has a couple portions of that building that go above the 30 feet. So the roof line of Building A tops out of approximately 38 feet to the roof ridge, while in the middle of the building, the 52 feet is the top of the elevator tower. Typically, the general plan, not typically, but the general plan does allow mechanical equipment and elevator towers to exceed the height limit, as long as they're centrally located, but because the applicant is proposing to have general access for a common open space on the roof, staff has found to, to include this as a, as part of the, the waiver request for elevator. The elevator tower is actually not exempt from the height standards, so that, thus, the applicant has requested this waiver for the elevator tower height. So this, the Settiville-Saratoga, I forgot my, Settiville-Saratoga Conceptual Plan area does require an average of 50 feet setback from the face of curb along South Deanso Boulevard, with no point being less than 35 feet. So you get, so if you have a point that's about 35 feet, as example, another, another part of the building that's setback would have to be greater than 50 feet, to just to make that average of 50 feet. So one of the waivers requesting for Building A is to have the full frontage of the building be 35 feet from the face of curb. So using a rendering as an example of how they, how they met the standards or, or to better demonstrate the waivers that they're requesting, as you can see from the face of curb to the, to the facade along South Deanso Boulevard is 35 feet. If they were to go to 50 feet, you could see how far back it would have to be, the building. We further have 38 feet to the roof line, and if you can see in the background right here, the elevator tower at 50, approximately 52 feet. And so where would 30 feet be along this building? So approximately right here would be 30 feet, where this red line is. So attached to the staff report was a justification letter from the applicant's consultant, or the applicant themselves, rather. Essentially, the meat of the waiver has to do with the potential loss of units. So if, if it wasn't for the height waiver, what the applicant had calculated, that 12 units would be lost if the, if the 30-foot height limit were enforced, including the entire third floor. If the front setback waiver was enforced without the waiver, the applicant had calculated a loss of approximately three units per floor for an overall combined total of at least six units lost. So there are findings required for denial of a waiver and/or incentive or concession. There's no, just as a reminder, there's no incentive or concession request as part of this application, just a waiver. And these are statutory, that the waiver or incentive concession would have an adverse impact on real property listed in the California Register of Historic Resources, which this is not, that the waiver or incentive concession would have a specific adverse impact upon public health, safety, or the physical environment, and there's no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the specific adverse impact without rendering the residential project unaffordable to low and moderate income households. As part of this project, there is a mitigated negative declaration with mitigated measures, which we could talk about in a little bit. For further comments about that, we do have Placeworks on call, on standby right now on Zoom, to, to answer any questions. And that the waiver or incentive concession is contrary to state or federal law. So one of, one of the things that our density, the city's density bonus ordinance, well, you know, the state density bonus ordinance allows the applicant, if requested, that they can propose an alternative parking standards. So in this case, the applicant has requested an alternative parking standard from the city's municipal code. So as there are two different types of residential programming on the site, the townhome portion as well as the, the higher-density apartment rental portion, the applicant has proposed a few alternates to this. And for the townhomes, typically with our ordinance, the municipal code ordinance is 2.8 parking spaces per townhome. They are proposing two on-site, which is consistent with our density bonus ordinance. And with our apartments, typically it's two per apartment, they are proposing two per apartment for the two or three-bedroom units. So if they were to, to go by the municipal code, they would need about 107 spaces throughout the development, including the retail portions, which they're not proposing to reduce in any ways. So what they're providing is about 98, 99 spaces. If they were to go strictly by the 19.56 alternate parking standards, they are allowed to have 98. So they're actually providing one more retail space than what's required. Further, what's also part of the state's mandate for alternate parking standards, that they, they're allowed to use tandem parking spaces, as well as reduced or no limits or standards for how many have to be enclosed or non-enclosed and whatnot. And so many of the units on this site, including, I think about half the townhomes and about five or six of the spaces, and the podium parking are also tandem. Tree removal replacement, replacing roof 51 trees with 51 trees of various block sizes. None of the trees that are being removed are actually on our protected species list per the, per Chapter 14 of our municipal code, but they are protected just because they have been development trees. And the vast majority of those, of those species are actually Italian cypresses, that, and many of those are along the western property line, adjacent to the single-family homes. You know, we did hear some concerns from neighbors and the single-family residences behind the, the, the project site. And so we added a condition that the applicant worked, you know, maintain as much as possible those matured Italian cypresses along the western property line, as they provide ample privacy protection to the rear yards of the joint single-family residences. The applicant's arborist, as well as the city's consultant arborist, had reviewed the, you know, the grading plans and whatnot, and their feeling was that the grading as proposed could, could be a detriment to those Italian cypresses. So, you know, we do have an out for them, you know, if case there, there's no way around to, to, there's no avoidance of, of that grading on that side, that they would have to do the plantings in conformance with the city's privacy protection measures. However, you know, the preference from staff, and I think, you know, probably, also the applicant as well, as well as, you know, the neighbors, is to keep those Italian cypresses if they can, because you have pretty much already made, you know, privacy protection measures. Talked about the vesting tentative map already, you know, just getting those two parcels subdivided into 12. Architectural design, the applicant has a presentation already that will go more detailed on the, the materials proposed on the side and the, the specific design, but just to kind of show you some of the renderings. Here's a view from South Deanso Boulevard of Building A, the mixed-use building, looking northwest into the retail portion, as well as the, the front of this, of Building A. Here's a view, again, kind of looking at the same perspective, same direction northwest, but along Prospect Road towards the townhomes, with the single-family residents in the, in the rear right here. And then here's a view looking northeast, almost like from a drone, looking like towards, from the rear of the townhomes into the, to the, to the mixed-use portion, as well across South Deanso Boulevard to San Jose. As you can see, Italian cypresses right there. You do see a rear deck or balcony area on the second floor of the townhomes. The third floor of the townhomes have transoms over the bedrooms on those typically. What we require for privacy mitigation in a single-story, or I'm sorry, on a two-story development, a single-family zone, is, you know, those being five feet from, from, from the windowsill, thank you, to the, from the finished floor. So site design, a couple of things to point out, you know, we do have standards within our general plan to reduce the amount of driveways with new developments. At the time of, currently there's two, two driveway entrances and exits along the south, along Prospect Road, this has been reduced to one. And the same thing along South Deanso Boulevard, where currently there are two driveway entrances and exits, this has also been reduced to one as well. and exits, this has also been reduced to one as well. One of the things we also, one of the things the city encourages, both through the general plan as well as through the conceptual plan, is to have interconnectivity between the parcels. So when this, one of the things we originally required, requested of the applicant was to, was to have an easement with the parcel to the north. Similarly, when we asked, when, when the city required the parcel to the north when it was developed in the mid-eighties to provide an access easement, when this site was, was redeveloped. One of the concerns brought up during the ERC meeting in October was, you know, well, how would this affect the sheriff's station if we have an opening directly from Prospect Road through the, the parking lot where the sheriffs maintain their, their vehicles? And so when staff reached out to the sheriff, it was, they were pretty blunt and said that we will have to move. There was, there was no, they were not too pleased with having an access from, directly from a right-of-way into the parking area of their, of their vehicle. So staff is recommending, for lack of a better term, kicking, kicking the standard down the road as a condition of approval when, so have the, have this developer build out an area, driveway, ready to be opened up in the event that we can require the northern parcels to open it, if and when they ever decide to redevelop it. So they would actually have the easement on that side. So, so we're not going to require, we're not going to condition a project to actually open it at this time, but in the future, kind of, kind of mirroring the condition that the northern property has as well. So environmental review, a draft initial study mitigating neg deck has been prepared. What the findings of this MND was that the city can rely on the adopted environmental protection standards in chapter seventeen, which includes demolition standards as well as bird safety standards and whatnot. Some of those conditions in that chapter add to, to the development permit resolution. So if you need reference to that. There were two, two mitigation measures that were added on top of this within the MND that, you know, Placeworks had, had found as well as some of our traffic consultants too. The first is our transportation. So the VMT or vehicle miles traveled were, for this project, were above the city's thresholds in our, in our municipal code, mainly due to the fact that this project site is outside of a half mile of, from a major transit stop. So there were some mitigation measures that included fair share contribution for bike improvements along Prospect Road, preparation of a school pool, bicycle, car share program, and behavioral intervention programs, as well as, as well as electric bike program, bike program. Further noise levels, so beyond what we have in chapter seventeen, some mitigation measures include construction shall comply with the noise ordinance as well as best management of practice for noise mitigation, ensure mechanical equipment is likely to meet the city's noise standards. This also includes certain physical barriers during, during ground disturbing activities that would prevent further noise going into single-family neighborhoods to the west. The ERC heard the item at its October twentieth, twenty twenty-two hearing and recommended the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration on a four oh one vote with city manager Wu absent. This project falls under the Housing Accountability Act as two-thirds, because more than two-thirds of the square footage is dedicated to residential. So the, the HAA limits the ability of a city to deny or impose concerning conditions on a housing development project when the project complies with applicable objectives, general plans, zoning, subdivision standards, and criteria. This project is a housing development project under HAA because it, as stated before, it is a mixed-use development consisting of residential and non-residential uses with at least two-thirds of square footage designated for residential use. And the project is either consistent with the city's objective standards or has applied for waivers or incentives and concessions under density bonus law. So the city can disprove a project under the HAA pending the following, that the project will have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety unless a project is disapproved or approved upon the condition that the project be developed at a lower density, and that no feasible method, method is satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the adverse impact exists. Staff has gone back and looked at the development permit resolution again and found a better way to, to, to regulate the BMR units, at least the, to better memorialize, excuse me, to better memorialize the, the BMR units on-site and how, and whatnot. So our recommendation is to delete condition thirteen and to modify condition seven to read the following, and what you see underlying there is kind of the added language to condition number seven. If I could read it just, just to have it on the record, density bonus affordable units is the title of the condition. So this would be a modify, again, modify condition seven. The project is granted a density bonus of nine marker rate units and shall provide one unit affordable for sale to median income households, one unit affordable for rent to low-income households, and three units affordable for rent to very low-income households as determined by the city's BMR mitigation manual. The important part is here, prior to occupancy, the proposed project shall record covenants that require the units to be occupied at those income levels for a period not less than ninety-nine years from the day of first occupancy of the units. Conclusion is that staff recommends approval of the project because the project condition of approval addressed concerns related to the proposed development, and all the findings of approval of the proposed project consistent with the chapters fourteen one eight, eighteen two eight, nineteen five six, nineteen one five six, and nineteen one six eight of the CMC could be made. Concerned developments, height setback, I'm sorry, should be front setback waivers, evidence in the records demonstrated that the project met the standards granting waivers under the state density bonus law. The next step is the planning commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the city council for a decision on the project, which is tentatively scheduled for June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Before the applicant presents, could you tell us why this is not subject to the twenty percent BMR for for-sale housing?
The, the modify, so this came in prior to council's approval of the, of the modified BMR manual.
Oh, when did this come in?
This came in, well, it first came in, I think, I believe, twenty twenty as a preliminary review, and then it, it was applied for in, I believe, twenty twenty-one, right before it was approved by council.
So I thought our twenty percent for for-sale housing requirement was before twenty twenty?
If you just give me a moment, I can find that date, but I do believe that this project came in before the twenty percent was.
Okay, yeah, I remember, I remember being on city council when we did the twenty percent. So it had to be before the end of twenty twenty.
I believe that date was May nineteenth, twenty twenty, and this came in before.
Okay, very good. So, and was it ten percent then for, for rentals or what?
It was fifteen percent rental and, and.
Oh, okay, so the twenty for for-sale came after this project. Okay, very good. So does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes. Do you have the slides? Do you know, or should I plug in?
Then afterwards, we'll go to public comment.
Good evening, members of the commission and staff. Thanks for hearing us this evening. Just wanted to kind of walk you guys through a little bit of the, the project from sort of our, our community design and, and building design standpoint, and review a couple of the key points of both the program, of the building and the process that we've gone through. As we've heard, it's thirty-four total units, twenty-three apartments and eleven townhomes. The distribution of the below market rate units is representative of the mix of units in the project as a whole and distributed throughout the project across the multiple floors of the apartment building as well as one of the townhomes. Wanted to touch on the transportation mitigation measures. There is an electric bicycle program, providing twenty electric bicycles for residents' use as well as the fair share contribution for the planned offsite improvements along Prospect. We did, at the request of the ERC, advanced soil testing to confirm any presence of former pesticides or, or anything from former agricultural use in the area, which was all found to be below any significant thresholds. There is a one-to-one tree replacement plan that's for anything that is removed, and as John noted, there is the, the condition to maintain to the extent possible the Italian cypresses along the western property boundary, which we feel would provide a great privacy screen both directions. So we'll do everything we can to maintain those within the, the project. And then there, there was community outreach that, that we did, and that was probably the, the primary concern that came out about that was the privacy across that western property line, which we, we heard loud and clear, and we're, we're happy to do everything that we can. Can I advance, John? Myself or, okay. Just a little exploded view here of the, the project itself, sort of pointing out the approximately seventy-four hundred square feet of commercial oriented toward Deansa. The eleven townhomes along the western property edge, two floors of apartments above the parking and commercial level for the twenty-three apartments, one in the very, it's eleven units per floor of, of flats, and then in the very lower left-hand corner of the building, there's a two-story unit. So it's actually a townhome, two-level townhome within the apartment building, that's how we got to twenty-three. And then the thirty-five hundred square foot common open space at the roof level. Next, yeah, thanks. Kind of just walking through some of the views that you've already seen and a few extra ones. We've also added in a before image in the lower corner of the slide. This is the, the main view along, along Deansa, and this, just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about kind of the, what, what we think is really is a neat mixed-use project, you know, as, as architects and planners, we always sort of start with kind of a, a community-focused basis for what our design is and looking at ways that we really can integrate, you know, from, from both sides of the project. And this is a really interesting one because it presents us with this urban edge and the ability to, you know, actually provide the commercial open space at the street frontage, which is, is appropriate for some sort of outdoor seating, depending on the use that goes into the retail, but providing kind of a welcome, deeper setback. The, of course, well, we'll get to the, the neighborhood transition next, but just in general, kind of a, a warm contemporary architecture, trying to work with color tones and materials there, sort of a warmer stone at the base, some kind of copper accents within the, the upper portions and a, what's a perforated metal as kind of an accent material that we weave throughout the, the project and balconies and at the project, at the residential portion of the project entry. And so this is the, this is the sort of ground level view of this, and next slide, please, is just elevating a little bit above that, looking down. We've seen this one before, but it, it highlights a little bit more the, the depth of that front public plaza and how it's, we will provide some short-term bike parking there for commercial uses. We don't show it furnished in this view right here, but that would be the intent, is that that's what that plaza could provide. Panning around the site just a little bit, these are some of the interior site views. This is, you can, you can make out just a little bit how the site slopes up from Deansa. So this provides us an appropriate, a taller appropriate floor plate for the retail that faces Deansa as the site grades and slopes up to the interior of the site. We, we take advantage of that for, for parking without having to actually raise the building to a higher level in the back portion of the site. The residence lobby is on the lower left portion of this image. It's really tucked back in there, it's to maintain sort of a sense of privacy and what's otherwise a little bit more of a public frontage of commercial and parking and to have it feel a little more protected from the, from the parking lot itself. And then the next view elevates that to, to show the view of that common rooftop open space. And I think that's going to be a really great space. I think those, we've seen in our projects, that those roof decks get a lot of use, and I, I think that this is a, is a really nice one that we've, that we've done here. Next. Panning around to the Prospect side of the site, just kind of wanted to highlight the first, the sort of first, most obvious, the form of the townhome itself. This is, this is not an off-the-shelf townhome plan that we've brought in here, this is really site-specific design. It's to work within the setbacks specific to this, this area as well as, you know, taking, taking measures to, to do the best we can to ensure privacy across the property line. We've, we've oriented front doors along Prospect. The end units of all, of these two buildings, B and Building C, have front doors facing to the ends, so that, that presents a front door along Prospect rather than a blank sidewall. The next image rotates just a little bit around and, and shows for the units in the middle, those are what we call front-loaded townhomes, they have both a garage door and a front door facing this interior alley, and that preserves private rear yards along the back of the property, and of course, sort of a like-for-like scenario rather than having foot traffic along the property line. And then I think might be the last slide is the overhead view, and we saw this one, and just wanted to talk a little bit again about the kind of the, the stepping of the townhomes, the location of the open space for, for those townhomes, and how we've, we've done what we can to, you know, provided that, that we could keep those Italian cypresses. I think we've, we've kept the, the windows stepped back, we've kept the windowsills high. We, you know, again, we've kind of, we've worked to, to have subtle compatible tones, nothing bright or garish, really kind of earth tones, things that we think are, are pretty compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And I think with that, is there, is that, is that my last one? Thank you. Thank you guys very much.
Okay, thank you. Now we will go to public comment before bringing it back to the planning commission. Madam City Clerk. Okay, I have one blue card from a resident, Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer. And do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Chair, we have three hands raised on Zoom from Rotifry, Peggy Griffin, and San Ar.
Okay. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you, Planning Commission, and that was a very nice presentation. I appreciate that. My husband moved into the air neighborhood behind this project when he was three years old, so he spent his entire life back there. The family home is back there. You can understand that when you're dealing with areas that are where people grew up, their whole family history is there. My husband used to play in the creek around Blue Hills, and he used to play at the Seven Springs Ranch property, and he remembers when they put in the gigantic sewer lines, he could stand up in them as, I think, a four or five-year-old. So it is on the edge of Saratoga, and I appreciate the fact that we have to be sensitive to other cities. Saratoga is very, very concerned about lower elevations, and I will be blunt here, the state can say things, but they are in Sacramento, and these are our cities and our towns, and the fight will be borne out at the local level. So I'm glad that the developer has seen fit to understand the sensitivity levels when you've had families that have lived there for over sixty to seventy years. Whatever Sacramento says does not determine ultimately what goes on there. There will be pushback if Sacramento came in there and said, we're going to have twenty story buildings that will block the views of the Blue Hills, and my husband often talks about the views that he had of the oak trees on those Blue Hills, and he would make up stories that they were covered wagons. This is a four or five-year-old. So we are messing with people's heritage. So I understand that people want to push housing, but when, when, when the metal hits the road here, these are people's lives and their homes and where their parents live. So I appreciate the fact that the, the developer has worked out a project that appears to be reducing the height, making sure that everything that is Cupertino and Saratoga and West San Jose is respected. and West San Jose is respected. There are two urban villages here in San Jose. We have Prospect Road Urban Village in West San Jose, and we have South Deansa Boulevard in San Jose. You can have signature projects up to 200 feet high in those urban villages. So the other question is, what are the schools? My husband went to Monovista High School, and then I'm running out of time, but we need to make sure that we respect all setbacks.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Or there will be pushback. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have three more in person. So the next one has no name, but the email starts with an L. So if that person would like to come up...is Li Fang here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, yeah, there's no name on the...
Yeah, I should have Riley in there.
On there, okay. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I think, I don't know whether we can go back to slides, but we, after reading figures, I have strong concerns about the roof deck in the second floor. And so I'm not sure whether we can go back to the figures, pictures for that floor plan? Okay. Yeah, go back to the, yeah, yeah, this one. So maybe, yeah, if you look at this view, like, this is only a little bit fit between the backyard, between the backyards, and then it's on the second floor. And also for, normally if you have like neighbors of residential, it's pretty far away instead of like, this is a very small yard, so it's very close. And also like for our home, we have, I think, three to four neighbors per house. So basically, if my kids is playing in the backyard, they have four houses, five houses in the second floor, they can view you. And also if everyone likes Cupertino, like, side areas, weathers, the situation is every day, every weekend, people will sit on the second floor and view us. So I think that's actually my major concern here is the second floor of the roof, these deck areas. Do we actually need that, given that you already have the backyards and people, they can enjoy everything in the backyards? Then, so I think that's the first one, first major concern. Second concern is the Italian cypress. And I think not every, it's not guarantee a very strong, like, 100% privacy. I think it's about 76% to 70%, considering there are multiple gaps in different cypress trees. And also we have some neighbors that don't even have an Italian cypress in the backyard. Yeah. So this, like, privacy, I think it's our, it's my major concern here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So next is Yu Ning. Welcome, Yu.
Yeah, another single-family owner to the other side of the townhouse. I also have some concern regarding the prices we have. So based on the current proposal, you know, our backyard, we're going to share the same things with the townhouse on the other side. And also based on the countries we have, the people from the townhouse, they can see our backyard very clearly from the second floor. And I have a six-month-old baby, and I really expect that I'm going to play with him a lot in the backyard in the future. So I'm doing like what we can do to have our prices better protected. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next is Anute. Is Anute here? Did I pronounce that right?
Anute.
Anute. Oh, Anute, oh, sorry, that was a T. Okay, welcome.
No worries. Yeah, yeah, again, just like the folks that preceded me, I also live on the western edge of the property, on Jamestown Drive, mostly like to echo the same concerns, just adding, you know, the, again, with the deck, concerns around the privacy. I do have some cypress trees on the back between, but they at best provide maybe 50%, 60% privacy, so there is still some concern there, especially, again, with the proximity. I believe it's, the deck would be as close as 15 feet from the property fence. So that's really, again, going back to similar concerns. I have some young kids as well, so continuing to maintain the privacy, no general issues around having a development as such, but, you know, whatever can be done to help mitigate that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Ting Kao. Welcome, Ting.
Hello, I'm Ting. Again, these are my neighbors. We have a couple of concerns. Privacy, I think you've heard over and over again. The Italian cypress trees, they are not in my backyard. They're only in half of my backyard. So actually, half of my backyard is not covered by the Italian cypress trees. I also hear that they might not survive potentially, and I'd like to know whose responsibility is it to actually make sure that when the development is done, if the Italian cypress are not doing well, whose responsibility is it to actually guarantee our privacy? Again, we are concerned about second stories, looking directly into our second stories, given that it's really the backyard is only 10 to 15 feet. It's very, it's very close. So you'll hear over and over, we lose, I think we're losing quite a bit of our privacy. It's okay, as long as we under, as long as there is a mitigation plan that we're happy with, but right now, if the only mitigation plan that you're talking about is, oh, we'll keep the Italian cypress tree, I'll tell you right now, I don't have them. Like, half of my backyard does not have the Italian cypress trees. They have some really low pine trees that's just not there. We are also concerned about construction noise and construction debris and construction air quality. My neighbors all have very young children, who we expect that everybody spends time in their backyard. I understand this is going to be a reasonably large construction, therefore, it's going to take quite some time, and it will be a huge concern of ours if there is no additional mitigations in terms of construction noise and construction air quality and construction debris. Given how long we expect this to go on, I think we would like the city to please address this issue so that we know that this is going to be taken care of, and if there is any complaints that we need to file, if things are not going accordingly, that there is somebody responsible that we can call up and have things mitigated. I hate for us to be suffering and not knowing who to call or how to even mitigate, because we're just, you know, individual, individuals versus huge corporations. That would be a huge concern for us. I think we are, we've written to the city in terms of email, we documented all our concerns. I have sent images or photos of the Italian cypress trees that's in my backyard, showing that only half of them is covered, and I have not heard back concretely in terms of what is to be done. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The last blue card I have is from Glenn. Welcome, Glenn.
Good evening. I'm another neighbor in back, and I share the same privacy concerns, although let me say at the start that I do support the project in general. I mean, we need more houses. One, I'm not going to go, you know, reiterate, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said, but I would like to bring up a related privacy concern, which is light. I mean, in the past, the Coach House has at times had lights shining in our backyard. Recently, they fixed that, and I would like to see some specific address to make sure that the lights are included in the privacy concerns, per the city regulations, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, for the Zoom people?
Yes, Chair, we have Rhoda Frye, Peggy Griffin, and San R.
Okay, welcome, Rhoda.
Rhoda, you'll need to unmute.
There we go. Hi, good evening. Oh, did you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So as usual, I haven't gotten all my ideas together. I do recall seeing this project in the past, and my concerns of the past are still here. I'm glad to see some of the neighbors participating this time. They didn't last time, maybe they didn't know about it. So I do share their concerns regarding privacy, both from the backyards and also from the decks, and also the impact on neighbors for solar. Other concerns regarding neighbors are testing for hazmat. I don't think that they were doing the entire, all of the potential hazmat. It seemed like it was a minimal list, and it's very, going to be very important to check for residential screening levels. Another thing that's a little strange about our laws are that although they are required to test for asbestos, so that any asbestos is mitigated prior to deconstruction, that is not the case for lead testing. And it would be very bad if there was any lead in the buildings and the paint and having that dust get on the neighbors with small children. Any amount of lead is very unhealthy. If that building were to be remodeled, the EPA would require lead testing, but because it is a new building, no lead testing is required, and I think that's a huge loophole. And given that we've got residents that are right next door, I'm going to beg you, please do lead testing. The other concerns I have are whether this project is going to be zero net energy. I didn't see any solar on the roofs, but maybe that was just a concept. What is being done for mitigations for open space, for park? I certainly hope that the rooftop is not mitigation for ground-level park space. We do need to have some, a little open space and plants. And the other one would be public art, and what, where would any public art go for this project? And I think that's about all the scribbles I had. Let me just see if I have anything else. I think that's about it. So I thank you very much for your time, and very important to have zero net energy so that those affordable homes, among other things, global warming, but also so that the affordable homes are more affordable, because energy costs us a lot of money, so we want to keep the energy cost low.
Hey, thank you, Rhoda. Next is Peggy. Peggy Griffin, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Scharf, council members and staff. I want to thank Gian for meeting with me and answering a lot of my questions. I also want to thank the staff and the developer for abiding by the BMR guidelines for BMR unit dispersal and comparability. That has been an issue with many developers, and it was a refreshing change to see one that actually did it. So thank you. My concern, I echo Rhoda Frye's concern about residential levels. I was pleased to see that there was advanced soil testing, because my concern was that a gas station garage is next door, and someone, Gian, said it was like a gas station corner with multiple gas stations in the area. So I'm assuming, because it went through the ERC and Kittymore, that it was looked at very closely. Unfortunately, I'm sad that we don't have that anymore. But I'm concerned that if it wasn't done with residential levels in mind, it needs to be. Fire. I'm concerned about the north side. If a fire breaks out on the north side of the building, I think it's A, where, adjacent to the sheriffs, or a fire breaks out on the west side in the back of the townhomes, how will the fire department address that situation? If somebody could walk through what will happen and what the requirements are? And I also want to request that the commission approve these changes, along with the staff's recommendation for the modification of the CCNR to specify the BMR units be recorded, and that's all I've got. If you could address fire, please, and residential levels. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peggy. That's, I will close public comment now. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more. Forgive me. Sorry, San R, welcome.
And San, if you could unmute yourself?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. Looks like the last speaker got forgotten. Appreciate the chair remembering the last speaker here. I was going to ask a couple of requests. Firstly, maybe this is for the future, but if staff can speak slowly for the benefit of citizens that are following along and are not as well worth the stuff or with the terminology and the language, it is rather hard to follow staff, and they get through the material, I understand they're highly familiar with it and trying to get through it with it at a fast pace, but poor residents that have taken the time to attend appreciate staff slowing down so that we may follow along and understand, especially as I heard a number of speakers that are attending in person may not be native English speakers, it was really hard to follow along when staff was speaking. It is a request to the chair to please slow staff down if they're speaking at a pace that is hard to follow. Coming to the project itself, I would like to understand how the project got to feedback from the neighbors. Seems like several neighbors are here today, speaking in person, offering feedback, and does not seem like their outreach in the past recorded that feedback. So I would like to see if the chair can request that that study be evaluated to see how neighbors' feedback was not accounted for and is not on the record, and if it is, why it was not brought up. And then I would like to go back to the issue that was raised about the sheriffs saying they would have to move if their access was impaired, and that is highly, highly concerning. And the fact that we are creating a pathway for that in the future makes me even more concerned, because that might come up, and that might require the sheriffs to move. As we know, we've had significant amount of crime as well as road safety incidents, and timely access to sheriffs and their ability to have timely access to their vehicles in the parking lot is of utmost importance to the safety of Cupertino. So I'm really concerned that we're not taking input from the sheriffs abiding by that and giving the leeway for access rights to change that may require the sheriffs to move, and we don't know how far they would have to move their parking structures if that came to it. So I would request that we abide by the feedback from the sheriff's department on their, on their access not being changed for their parking vehicles. Finally, I want to request that the waivers for height and parking and setback be rejected on the grounds of impairing the convenience and safety and health of the residents that are on the west side of the property. The height is nearly double if you account for the full height of the structure, and we now have opportunities to see what these heights actually look like.
Okay, thank you.
The ridgeline is not the total height. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes public comments. We'll close public comment. Perhaps the staff could answer some of the residents' questions about tying the parking lots together. I mean, I see along Deansa, a lot of the businesses are preventing that where it used to be possible. Now they're ensuring that people can't drive through, because it's almost created another street back there. But as I understand it, we're not going to open that up. Is that true?
Yeah, although it is a policy of the general plan and, I guess, a requirement of the conceptual plan, we know we've conditioned the project to prepare for it in the future if we can from the northern parcel, but not required at this moment.
Okay, so the sheriff won't have to leave. Go ahead, David.
I was actually going to say, as a point of order, normally we would have the applicant would have an opportunity to speak at this point if they choose to.
Oh, yeah, if the applicant would like to respond to the residents' concerns as well. I mean, they already did, did their presentation, though.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everyone.
And did you make a list, or I had?
I made a list, yeah. I have the list. Thank you all the neighbors for their comments, and I think there's some confusion about those tree since the start. We are proposing to plant more tree than it's there right now, and we're keeping existing tree and trying to fill the void of what's not being able to keep, and that is the solution to that screening. And I think there was confusion on some of the comment about tree. And privacy-wise, I think we're obeying to the setback to the back of the property, 15 feet, and for the population of the townhome and for the distant, it's similar to any other single-family development, is similar to any other neighborhood that respect each other, and those cypress trees will get at least two-level high right now, and the new cypress will catch up to that height as time go by. And as for the noise concern, I believe the contractor or whoever they're going to conduct those operation in terms of grading noise, our operation will be tightly monitored, and they will not exceed certain level of working hours and control those dust with watering mechanism as the plant goes by. And we have operation over the bay, and we're used to that kind of operation. We have superintendent on site to hear any kind of complaint that the neighbor... We're, we have superintendent on site to hear any kind of complaint that the neighbor might have. And we'll post the phone number on the fence so they can contact us directly if there's any complaint. Outreach to the neighbor, we did outreach to the neighbor 300 feet. And we did receive some of those comments through that outreach. And that's why we know about the tree. That's why we want to obey to the existing tree and trying to keep them surviving greatly as the construction goes. What else is there? There's some concern about solar to install or not to install. I believe we don't have a plan for solar installation because some of the neighbor concerned about the light reflections and the heat that it might generate down the road. On the other flip side, there's, there's comment about net zero. We're, we're committed to green building. We're using all the energy efficient appliance and, and construction process to provide that standard. But we might not be able to get to the green building just because of the net zero calculation method. But we are trying to achieve that. What else is there? Noise, appreciation to do. And I, I want to thank you for all the resident to be supportive of this project. I hope everyone will understand this will transform neighborhood and, and be an example of how we can actually do something in Cupertino. Appreciate your time.
Oh, so one of the questions was about park space?
Park space, okay.
Is the rooftop?
The rooftop count and also the corridor in between the town home count as well. So we're working with, that's why we also needed that back to be a private open space. I think that answer, I need, need my architect to, to chime in on that calculation. So we're calculating both a private and public park space.
Okay, so there, there's no public park space there. It's all private.
There is.
But 50% of that counts, is that true, John?
You know, so they, they will have to pay the, the mitigation fee. So there, the applicant's not proposing to have any of their common open space be counted as, as park space.
Okay, okay, very good.
Can I ask a question?
Go.
Yeah, so on the, the tall building, building A.
Yes.
Only one half of the top is, you know, shown as, you know, with trees and, you know, and ceilings, not the second half. Any reason?
For the apartment you mentioned?
Yeah, yeah.
Where there should be tree or what, what do you mean?
Yeah, on the rooftop.
Okay.
There's only one half of the building, you know, that's with, you know, the trees and, you know, and the seating. The other half looks like, more like a parking structure. Can you pull up the picture?
Screen.
Go ahead, John.
Commission, was this a picture from the applicant's slide deck or, or staff's recall?
I think I've seen it in both.
Okay, let me see if I can pull this one up right here. Is this one?
Yeah, this one.
Okay.
See that, the, the sec, the second, the backside.
Okay.
It looks like, you know, empty parking structure, isn't it?
So the tree covering is where the open space, the garden is. And some of the other area, it would be utility. It would be your AC unit or, or some other mechanical item that's gonna go there. So that's why the tree is surrounding where the human interaction is gonna be. And that's where the green element was designed.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm talking about, yeah, where the arrow is pointing, right? So that space, it looks like, you know, more like a parking structure.
Sure, so, so just, just to clarify, the parking is podium, it's underneath the?
Underneath, yeah, so I know that, right? So there's, there's homes built on, you know, the parking structure, right?
Correct, correct.
The, the front half of the ground floor is, you know, retail. And then on the back half of the ground floor is the parking structure.
Correct.
And the homes are above, right?
Correct.
And, and if you look at this diagram, you know, the, where you have the arrows pointing, you know, that structure looks in a vacant and it looks more like, you know, a open parking structure.
So are, are you referring to this portion?
Yeah, 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 further out, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm assuming correctly if I'm wrong, Justin, that's where a lot of the utility structure are going, such as HVAC and whatnot.
Okay, okay, it's for HVAC and all that.
HVAC and mechanical.
For, for all the units?
Yes.
Okay, okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and, and in one of the diagrams, you know, that he was displaying, he had three layers. And the middle layer had, you know, some color scheme. I was trying to understand, you know, what that color scheme is.
Stop me when, when I get to it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, this one, yeah, yeah. So, so you see that the, the middle layer, so it is in a yellow color. So I'm just trying to understand what that color scheme is.
Yes, that, that's just designating the mix of units. So there's a, there's a range of unit, two, two and three bedroom units.
Okay.
We've color coded them.
Okay.
With different shades of, to indicate the different unit plans, yes.
Okay. John, repeat, what is the requirement for the state of California for solar? That only applies to single family homes or? I thought all new construction required solar, but it may only be single family.
So I, I could tell you where our MND states is that there will be, probably be solar on this. That's according to MND, so, you know, I think the applicant's proposing that, or will propose that.
Oh, I just heard that there will not be solar. Am I confused here?
There, there are different requirements for different building types. I believe there are some requirements about being solar ready. And, and so while I don't necessarily know what exactly the requirements are for this particular project, but they will have to meet the, our green building code and they will have to meet the building code in general.
I had the same question because I did hear them say they will not be solar and I thought that was required. So I'm, I'm not sure what the?
The town home rules size and we can do the engineering on, on it at the building permit stage. But if there is a need for solar, I think we can be solar ready.
Okay, and I didn't think that, because the solar panels usually face either south or west, I didn't think that this would impact the neighbors that are, the neighbors that are to the west because their panels would be facing, you know, towards the hills or towards the south. But I think we do have some rule about new buildings impacting existing solar production on other buildings. Is that, is that true?
I'm not quite clear if we have anything that's, that's specific, but we do have some standards about.
I thought it was a state law, actually, not city law.
I would think so, Puke, correct.
The city attorney, maybe.
I don't believe there's anything that talks about solar panels unless they're trees. There was a case about that, but I don't think it has to do necessarily with structures because the state is allowing structures to rebuild at four feet for the most part. With this forfeit setback in general. But whatever the city's requirements are for green building and whatever the MND requires, you know, if that is part of the analysis and that is part of our mitigation measures, we will ensure that those are implemented before the building permits are issued for this project.
Okay.
I think that that actually may have been, I remember this coming up before. Your planting plan could be something that needs to be reviewed, that it doesn't impede the solar in it. So, you know, if somebody, I don't know, if somebody had a existing solar installation on the, on the western side, it's possible that that may be something you need to accommodate, yeah.
No, it would be on the east side of the homes behind there.
Oh, yes.
Right, which normally you don't put solar face, facing east. Okay, were that, were those all the questions of the residents? So where in the plan did it say the applicant was gonna add more trees and not just replace the 51 that were being removed? I didn't see where, they said they would add more cypress trees in the back.
It, it wasn't cypress trees, but it was a species that was consistent with our privacy mitigation plan along the, on the west side. So, you know, the, the plan set that's attached to the staff report doesn't show maintenance of the, of the Italian cypresses. That's why we have it as added condition. So when they do come in with building permits that we would encourage them to.
Okay, so, so what is the distance between those second floor balconies and the property line?
So it's, it goes between 15 and 20 feet, which is consistent with our, with our conceptual plan in that area.
Right, so in a normal, single family neighborhood, what would the distance, what would it be?
For first floor, you know, it's typically 20 feet. You can go as close as 10 feet with a minor residential permit pending that there's some rear yard area standards. The second story is actually more restrictive for this area than it would be for a normal single story, a single family neighborhood. So for example, the second story setback is, in this case, 30 feet. Whereas in, in a normal, it would be 25 feet for, for.
Okay, yeah, when I looked at that, I was really concerned about privacy. And then I was thinking if, in a, in a single family neighborhood where there's houses backing up to each other, you also have that, you know, same privacy concern. I think, you know, the issue here that there's been nothing there for so many years that there's kind of an expectation of privacy. Sorry, go ahead, Seema.
Yeah, so I just have a question on the, the trees, right? Because I just want to understand, will there be some sort of enforcement mechanism to make sure that there are privacy trees planted there that fully block all of it? Because I didn't see that in the report either. I saw 51 trees will be replaced. I didn't see anything about we will infill where there are gaps or we will, you know, like, there was nothing.
There, there were landscape plans submitted with, with the application. So the commissioners got a separate, wasn't attached to the staff report, but was a separate email that showed the full plan set. So it was probably the last, I would say, five sheets that showed the, the planting plan with, with certain, with tree replacement types and, and whatnot. But to your, to your point about enforcement and, and ensuring that these trees are maintained, we typically, even in R1 zones, require a covenant to be placed on the properties that would, that would state the, the type of trees and that are placed or whatnot. Typically removing any protected species is a $3,000 to $4,000 fine per tree. So those, so there's a lot of, lot of incentive, I would, rather than incentives, I'd say a lot of teeth behind our ordinance and our, and our fine structure, so.
Is there a way to publish that or send it out to the neighbors so they know what their options are if, if there are gaps? And who to, who to contact and what they, they can ask for?
So the first step typically, and this is consistent with our chapter 17, which is recently adopted, is, you know, prior to demolition, you know, I think properties within 500 feet, Puke, correct? 500, 300 feet, it's, of, of the project site are notified when demolition will, will start and whatnot. You know, although we cannot send out building permit plans, and this has been the case forever because of copyright issues, you know, we are open to, to speaking with, with residents and, and whatnot.
Yeah, I'm not asking for detailed building plans. I'm just saying, you know, here are your rights. You know, like, this is what you can ask for. If the trees aren't, you know, satisfactory, this is who you can contact. You know, something really kind of simple like that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, the first step is, is these types of hearings, right? The city council hearing and whatnot, this is, this is how they, how they know their rights and whatnot. So on the project side itself is, you know, the, they are required to have contact information and whatnot. So the city's very, I mean, we're very open. There's no formal process to have a letter sent with action letters or, or, you know, certificate of occupancy letters to, to each neighbors once occupancy begins. However, you know, they, they should know their rights as homeowners and, and to be vigilant in case that some of those trees are taken out. And that's, that's how most of our code enforcement is done in the city anyways, is the vigilance of the, of the neighbors.
Okay, go ahead.
So, so on the, the tree mitigation plan, the preliminary tree mitigation plan on the di, the diagram that staff sent, if I look at, you know, along the west side wall, there's about almost, you know, 40 cypress trees shown if you count all the bubbles. So I don't think, you know, there are 40 trees today, so that means, you know, are we going to plant that many? Like, does each bubble, you know, count or is that just, you know, a rough pictorial depiction?
Sorry, I'm, I'm trying to pull up the, the plan sheet right.
It is the last, last page.
Sure.
67, I think is actually the?
Yeah.
Yeah. It looks like it's calling for screening trees, but of a different?
Correct. So I think staff has added a condition, if you look at the draft resolution, that says that they will try to retain the cypress trees. And, and because they're removing certain other trees on the property, they do need to plant replacements so they would fill in those gaps.
Okay.
However, if because of grading issues or any other issues during construction, some or all of these cypress trees need to be removed and it is, it's not possible to retain them because they're, they, they will get damaged. In that case, I believe the plans also call for replacing them with pittusporums, which are a fast growing screening tree, which is also part of our, our one privacy list, which is routinely used.
Okay. I have a question about the e-bikes.
Okay.
So where will those be stored and charged? Just because I know in New York City, there's been a number of e-bike fires and a lot of buildings are now not allowing e-bikes to be stored in the building.
Okay. So we do have a slide prepared for this. We're proposing to have the e-bike on the north side of the, the building next to the mixed use building on the outside. The second option will build a structure on the roof to store part of the bike population when they're not in use. And they can swap out as the residents take them into their usage.
Yeah, and, yeah, while that slide's coming up, I, I know in New York, what?
It's, it's up right now. It's up right now, so.
Oh, it's, oh, there we go, okay. So they will not be charged in the units or stored inside the units?
No, they won't, won't be charged. On the north side of the building, we have opportunity to provide charging on the outside. That's outside of the building. It'll be covered on, on, on the top and then have a charger available from the wall.
So are these available to both the townhouses and the apartments?
Yes.
And how, how are they maintained and replaced as they age?
I think as they age, HOA will have to hire a company to continue to maintain and uphold the, the operation with reasonable lifespan. And for operation wise, usually the e-bike will come with an app program that allowed resident to check in and check out those bikes. And I think long term wise, HOA have to take a lead on that.
Okay, so there'll be an HOA for the townhouses, but?
It will be one HOA, both the apartment.
For the rental, oh, I, okay. I'd never heard of HOA for rentals. It's usually?
Yes.
The property owner.
Yes, yes.
Oh, and the other thing that they did in New York City is all the e-bikes sold in the city have to be UL 2849 approved. You can't go and buy, you know, the cheapest e-bike from Amazon and, and say you're done, so.
Correct. We do have a budget in place in the staff report stating the minimum amount of 1,500 per bike. And that's our goal to provide a quality bike for the resident to use.
Okay, I mean, I would like to put in there that the e-bikes would have to be, meet the UL standard, which is fairly new, UL 2849 certified. And, yeah, easily available for $1,500, but not available for $300 at Costco or wherever.
It is in the mitigation measure, the between 1,500 and I believe $2,500. But I'm assuming we can amend the mitigation measure in the EA, in our EA resolution to add that standard. Yeah, yeah, it's, I see that as a minor change. And, and Chair Scharf, can you repeat the?
It's Underwriters Labs 2849, which is the certification for the entire bicycle.
We also have Terry McCracken from Placeworks right here. Terry, if you could respond, and this is, as this is probably, I'm assuming, a minor change. Do you see this as being an issue to modify this mitigation measure?
No, I don't see it being an issue.
Okay. And along those lines, so the e-bikes are part of the solution to meet the VMT. So what happens if, how is the VMT monitored? And if it's not met, what are the other steps that get taken so the VMT is met?
So, I mean, this is, you know, part of this, this e-bike program will be have to be as part of their CCNRs, correct? You know, if we find that they are not abiding by their CCNRs, there are issues. Well, we've done in the past too, we withhold building permits from being issued, you know. You know, if it's not life and safety or, or, or whatnot. But it's, it's, and again, it's up to also the vigilance of the residents of that to, to, to ensure that, you know, if, if they're not getting the e-bikes or they're not maintained, they can?
No, 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 I'm saying what if they're not used? I mean?
If they're not?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the reality is that, you know, there's very little public transit there and it's a long way from the job centers of Silicon Valley. And so I remember originally there was, that, they said, there was something in the plan. was, that, they said, there was something in the plan that said if the VMT was not met, there would be additional, you know, steps taken, either like bus passes or, or something. I, I don't know what.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, and I apologize for misunderstanding your question. Um, Terry, do you recall any, what, if, if there are, if these VMT measures are not being used, what are some of the alternatives to, um?
Yeah. What is our enforcement to, that the VMT is being met?
I can't speak to the, um, Terry McCracken at Placeworks. Um, I can't speak to the enforcement, but the VTA model that the VMT, um, is based off of, has built-in credits that you can apply, and those have been vetted through VTA, that these are, um, mechanisms that help reduce the, um, VMT. And so, we chose these ones. It's not just, I mean, you've seen the mitigation measure Trans One, so it's not just the bike program. There's several things that are being implemented, you know, concurrently.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Seema.
So, right. So I looked at the, the VMT impact, and it's twenty-two percent over what it's supposed to be, the eleven-point-five, right, which is pretty significant. Um, I share the same concern as Chair Sharf. There aren't any enforcement measures included here, um, and I wonder how, and, and I, it's, it's a really robust-looking program between the, the e-bike loner program, the school pool program, the transportation coordinator, the car share program, subsidized memberships. That all sounds great, but, you know, like, for example, I look at Apple's TDM that we, that we negotiated with them. There was an enforcement mechanism that we negotiated with them to have a third-party monitor the, the VMTs and the amount of reduction that they were able to meet. And then there was a penalty if they weren't able to meet it for a period of, I think it was like five or ten years or something like that. Um, can we have something similar here where we have some sort of third-party monitoring to make sure that they are meeting that VMT reduction goal of eleven-point-five? Uh, and if not, what, what are our options? Like, do we have penalties we can impose? Like, how do we monitor this and how do we enforce that to make sure that the VMTs come in at eleven-point-five or below?
Yeah. I mean, what, what I understood from Placeworks was, there's not, you know, even if you don't meet the VMT, as long as you have met the VTA requirements to theoretically reduce the VMT, that that is sufficient. I mean, I don't like it, but, I mean, am I interpreting that correctly?
So if I may, Chair.
Sure.
When the VMT, uh, VTA's model was set up, they, they had a menu of options that they, um, included in their model, uh, from which you can choose measures to reduce your VMT. And those reductions were based in studies and actual research that was done to indicate how much reduction you get from each mitigation measure. And those were scientific papers that were, um, peer-reviewed, et cetera, and those were built into the model. And my understanding is that these mitigation measures are picked from that. It's a pick list essentially.
Right. And as long as you pick enough.
As long as you pick from that list, and as lo- and as long as there is enough research behind that in VTA's model, that is the legal standard for, uh, for indicating that you have met your VMT.
Right. It doesn't matter if the VMT actually goes down, as long as you meet that.
Enforcement is certainly one thing, um, you know, uh, can we put, can we strengthen this? I, I would defer that to Terry, um, and her expertise on this. This is a small enough project where, you know, enforcement is, uh, you know, that does involve a lot of staff time as well, and, um, you know, resources both on the applicant's end and the city's end potentially. But again, I will ask Terry to maybe comment on that.
Right. Because, you know, they're getting more units on the basis of being able to reduce, you know, the VMT.
Well, they're getting more units as a basis of density bonus, yes.
Right. But, I mean, if we have VMT standards, it isn't, I mean, what is the point of having standards if we don't enforce them?
And, and the cities, uh, the way that the city is implementing that is in using VTA's model and that their research and the pick list that they have utilized. But again, I will, I will ask Terry to respond to this as well.
Right. No, I mean, I think it's great that we're putting in a program, but without any, um, any measurements to see if the program is working, it seems like that's only half the solution.
Yeah. This is, uh, Terry again. I think that what we, Pugh, I think what we can do is in the mitigation monitoring report, we can there identify the frequency of monitoring of this mitigation to see what does require monitoring of the mitigation, and we get to choose, like, how often or how frequently that is being mitigated. Um, I think the second part of what you're asking is, you know, demon- you need to demonstrate that the measures are working, and then if, if there's other measures that you then pick from the VTA's list. That part, I think we have to talk a little bit more about maybe adding that into the mitigation measure. But I think the solution you're looking for right now for monitoring the mitigation measures is already built into the MMRP.
Okay, and?
And, you know, we can, uh, right, right now, I think in the MMRP, which is included as chapter five in the MND, that we can change the monitoring action and the monitoring frequency.
Okay. So will that have to be part of one of the resolutions, or?
That is Exhibit A to the first, the EA resolution, I believe.
Correct.
To which one?
A resolution.
Okay.
Which is the environmental assessment file number essentially.
It's Exhibit EA dash one.
I would point out, the transportation coordinator does have a long-term role to make sure things are being implemented, and that was included as part of the final ISMND. We should be able to work with that as well.
Okay. Um, let's see.
Um, I had a question about the, uh, the e-bike parking on the roof. How do they access it? So how do you get to it?
Uh, you have to take the residential elevator to the roof.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have, okay, go ahead. Yeah. Okay. So, um, this is for staff. So, so I understand, you know, fifteen dwelling units per acre is the current, you know, land use designation for that site. Did we assume any different density for the new housing element consideration when we were looking at this location?
Um, I believe it was fifty dwellings per acre.
Okay. So that's what we were, uh, we were thinking, but, you know, it's, but we are still sticking to the, the old designation. Because the, the new one hasn't gone into effect yet.
Correct. There, we haven't made any changes to the land use element.
So, so this, this project is going under the existing land use density allocation? So, the parking spaces, ninety-nine versus, you know, hundred and seven. So it's my understanding that, you know, according to our municipal code, we need hundred and seven spaces, but the state law density provisions and all that is war-riding it to allow up to, you know, they, they are needed to build, you know, ninety-eight, so they're giving ninety-nine. So one more than, you know, what's required as per the state law, but our municipal code requires hundred and seven. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, um, to me, you know, um, this is just my, uh, comment and observation. Retail needs, you know, parking spaces, so, uh, I, I feel bad that, you know, we are not, you know, doing hundred and seven, right? I would hate to see, you know, retail suffer because there is not enough parking spaces, right? I personally, wherever, you know, I can't park, I don't go to that shop. Okay? So, um, so I'm not going to walk to the shops, right? So, but, but then, you know, people, you can't change the people's behavior, right? So, uh, if they can't find parking, they are going to, you know, suffocate the businesses. So that's just my observation. Um, so I understand the height waiver. I didn't quite understand the setback waiver, because, you know, the setback, you said, you know, it could be from thirty-five to, you know, fifty. So they do have thirty-five. So why is that, you know, we need a waiver?
Sure, I can explain that. Are you still able to see the site plan with the e-bike parking options? Okay, so it's an average. So it has to average fifty feet according to the conceptual plan. So with the minimum setback being thirty-five.
Okay. So, so it has to be, the, the total depth average has to be fifty.
Right.
Um, the, some parts, you know, being, you know, thirty-five, and some being, you know, seventy and whatnot. But then this one has, you know, thirty-five period.
It's, it's just flat thirty-five.
Okay, okay, got it. Um, let's see. Uh, does city have, you know, some kind of, you know, architectural and design guidelines, you know, for that entire, you know, segment from, um, you know, the Yamaguchi part, right? So all the way up to, you know, the Prospect. Because I would hate to see, you know, each of these developments, you know, come up at different times and look totally different, right? I, I would like to see, you know, some kind of, you know, homogeneity, so that, you know, even though they are all owned by different property owners, but they all kind of, you know, look and melt together.
So the, um, the Saratoga, Sunnyvale Ser- Ser- Sunnyvale Saratoga, Saratoga, it's changed names many times. Saratoga Sunnyville Road conceptual plan, um, only contemplates site design rather than building design.
Okay. Let's see. Um, the driveway extension that we talked about, right? So when the other properties that get developed, you know, we want the driveway to extend. So can we put some condition where, you know, it's kind of a binding? Because I, I do remember seeing a conflict, you know, between two adjacent properties on McLealand where, you know, they couldn't come to an agreement, and, you know, they were complaining when the second property came for development approval, and we ended up telling them, you know, you guys go and work it out on offline, right? So, so I, I'd like to see something, you know, that's concrete and binding for both the developers that say, you know, you got to honor this.
So that's, that's part of the condition of approval for the development permit. So it is conditioned. You know, we took, staff took the, because of the issues with the sheriff's department and, and wanting to maintain the Mathis location if possible, um, we decided instead of requiring it at this time, we require a date to be determined once the, the parcel of the north. Now, if the planning commission could always suggest, no, we want it done now, we can modify that condition of approval that's required to be done now. Because, because the, the parcel of the north also has that same condition.
Yeah.
That's reciprocal, so.
Yeah. We want to make sure it's binding on both sides, and so it doesn't become an issue later on when that property gets developed. Because we have seen it on McLealand where, you know, there was, condition put on the first development, and the second development came up, and they needed to share the driveway, and they were not, they, they were not, you know, cooperating, right? Okay. Um, let's see. Uh, yeah, the privacy trees, please make sure that, you know, that's rock solid, because, you know, privacy is a major concern for a lot of our residents, and, you know, and every development that we approved, including the Bate brothers and few others, you know, we made sure that, you know, there are privacy trees, so that, you know, the adjacent, you know, single-family homes, you know, don't lose privacy. So let's make sure that, you know, that's, uh, rock solid. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, Josh?
Yeah. Just a couple of questions about the commercial space. Uh, we haven't really spoken about what you're envisioning those spaces to be utilized for. Just curious if you had an idea.
I think, uh, this space is suited for light-serving, uh, uh, food service type, retail type, or, um, any kind of, uh, non-heavy cooking, uh, uh, establishment, I would say.
Sorry, you said non-what? Non-heavy cooking?
Heavy cooking.
Heavy cooking?
Yeah, not a full-on restaurant. We have residential up top, and, uh, we're not prepared to have a restaurant downstairs.
And does the zoning prevent or, uh, any specific types of commercial uses?
No, this is under CG. Um, if I could add to that, but, you know, Carlson talked about cooking. We do have a condition about, um, order payment systems on the roof, too, you know, especially as so, so adjacent to a single-family residential, but.
This isn't going to be.
Long answer short, yeah, yes, it's, it's CG, and whoever have, whoever's allowing CGs allowed on this site.
Cool.
Is that it? Okay. Yeah, uh, he beat me to it, but, yeah, the, the retail, I'm really concerned because we, I've been making a list of six mixed-use projects that we've had in Cupertino, and on none of those six has the mixed-use worked. The retail, um, either there's continuous turnover, or it never gets leased at all. Um, Metropolitan, City Center, Trevigna, nineteen-eight-hundred, Biltmore, and I forget the name of the one on the corner of, um, Stevens Creek and Deans, uh, where there was a restaurant, and it closed years ago, and, uh, they can't. So, I mean, is there a reason why it's mixed-use as opposed to not all residential?
I think initially, it was, uh, staff request to retain some of the current retail in the initial, uh, application. Uh, and we found that it's actually, uh, makes sense for the residential around this area to have some retail retained. And it is, uh, uh, I think with a couple of other new property, uh, in the neighboring location opening, and with this location open, and with actual residential to supply customer to those retail, uh, they might have a higher chance of survival, I would say.
Right. I think that there was that one popular rest- Japanese restaurant there, but that would be heavy cooking, so that could not go in there.
Well, I know them well, and, uh, they would have to retain to, you know, just sushi, maybe. That would be, that would be pretty good to continue to serve. And, uh, and when I say non-heavy cooking, we, they would have to work around on, on their hood and, and oil usage and see how they can fill the menu with, uh, still authentic Japanese.
Right. I know we do need more boba places in Cupertino. We're kind of have a shortage of those.
You can put a condition on that.
No, no, we're not going to put that in. Okay, okay.
Only have enough parking for that.
Right, there won't be enough parking for that. So, um, back to a serious note. So for the rental apartments, um, are these being designed so they'd be possible to do co- they'd be suitable for condo conversions in the future if the rental market, um, does not improve?
I would say they're pretty similar to what a condo would look like in, in, in a for-sale scenario. It's a two-to-three-bedroom scenario, and, uh, it would be fitted if, uh, the market is open up for it.
Okay, then if it, and if they were converted to condos, I guess this is for our planning staff, um, there'd be no increase in the BMR percentage, right? It would remain at fifteen percent.
That's, that's, that's a great question. You know, we do have a condo conversion ordinance in our zoning, in our, you know, zoning ordinance, um, chapter nineteen. Uh, it, it makes it very difficult, uh, to convert from rental to condominium, condominiums. There's, there's citywide surveys that have to be done based on, uh, rental occupancy levels and whatnot.
Right. I know they did it at, what is the name of the project on Deans and Stevens Creek? I can't remember.
Metropolitan?
No, no, no. Deans and Stevens Creek. Metropolitan is down.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Monobello.
Monobello, right, yeah. I think that was originally rentals, and then they changed it to condos, if I recall correctly. Um, and, and I know Avier was also approved for a condo conversion, but they never did it. Um, okay. Um, yeah, I guess that's, anyone else? Go ahead.
David?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, David, go.
And I have a question.
So one of the, one of the items, uh, that was mentioned was, uh, ample privacy protection measures. That's a common part of the, by the plan. I'm just curious, if it could be, uh, if you could kind of, uh, explain what that, what that would be? How you, how you.
So I, I, you know, I think it's staff's intention, not think, it wa- it is staff's intention to, when we, we did the ordinance in the tree, the tree, tree removal permit, um, resolution, we did, excuse me, the condition of approval, um, to maintain those, um, Italian cypresses, those existing ones, you know, the, the second part of that condition was to abide by the R1 standards for privacy protection, which, which details certain, um, uh, box, minimum box sizes, planting heights, as well as distance between trees of those plantings as well.
Great. Great, thank you. And then I'm curious, I'm curious to ask a little, maybe in a little bit more depth about the sheriff's office, um, response. I, um, often people don't, don't like to have access. Um, I'm just curious, if you, if you had any more detail on that, was there, what was the concern that was being raised there?
I think it was direct, um, community access by right into the, into the parking lot where they have the patrol vehicles. You know, I believe that they, they believe, they, they would want, my understanding, at least from my conversation with, with them, is they want some separation, uh, between the public right-of-way and public access to their patrol vehicles. And this would give them, the public by right, access into the rear.
Yeah, I did, I don't, I don't have any, I don't actually have an, uh, an issue with that. I mean, I could, I felt that that was something that was unusual in the report. Um, you know, if I were. You know, if I were, if I were living in the, in this project, you know, perhaps I wouldn't want to have an open pathway, you know, to the jail. So, maybe that's, maybe that's just as well. And I think, I did know that, it was interesting, the discussion about solar, solar support on these buildings. I did, I was thinking about that ahead of time and I did notice the plans actually showed a solar area on all the units. So, you know, I would encourage, I would encourage, you know, although I think net zero is a lot to reach for, I think I would encourage that as part of the design. You know, I don't think there would be anybody who would be opposed to that as being an integral part of the design. And I guess the only other thing, the only other thing I had to comment, maybe we'll do this when we come back in comments as opposed to this section. But, you know, in my prior term here, you know, we had a lot of hearings which were related to decks and, you know, decks and privacy concerns. So I was a little surprised to see this in this design. I think it is a plus for the people who would consider living there. But to me, I would actually probably have highlighted that as probably the most controversial thing in this design. So, you know, I think it seems like the requirement for private open space was met in the yards without the need of having that space. And I realize that from a, from a planning and allocation space, that decks are kind of a, you know, upper-four balcony or deck is a kind of a freebie. I've mentioned this before. I think that's probably something that as a city, we should really look at whether we want to treat it that way. If there was, if it were treated not as a, you know, kind of a hundred percent space that's not counted toward the, toward the...
Square feet.
To the limit, I think that that probably would have been a, that would be beneficial for the city. So I think, you know, and so in some respects, you know, pulling the back gate back a few feet probably would... I think that you'll actually, I suspect, whether, I have pitasperm in my backyard and I suspect that whether it's pitasperm or aspens or whatever gets chosen here, that I suspect that that should address the issue in the future. But I guess I just wouldn't go looking for trouble.
Yeah, I agree, David. I think the city really needs to, the decks and balconies comes up continuously. And, yeah, until, you know, the city passes some ordinance on that, you know, our hands are really tied in that regard. So, yeah, you mentioned when we come back to comments that we kind of have been doing comments all along. But, yeah, we can officially go to comments now if anyone else has anything more. Go ahead, Seema.
Okay, so on the e-bike storage, I noticed in the site plan you had an e-bike area on the ground floor in the parking level.
Right.
I just assumed that's where the e-bike storage was, but that's a different e-bike storage or...
Well, that area would be for repair, for storage that non-used by or for convenient. I think it's a flex area that we stored out to allocate it from the retail space for a convenience sake in terms of how that e-bike program would run. We anticipated more convenient to have by available downstairs. And if there is a repair need, that room would be a good place to repair it as well.
Okay, so from an e-bike storage perspective, so between the two options, you outlined the outdoor one and the indoor one.
Yeah.
E-bike theft is a real concern. So I think indoors and protected is... So I would prefer if we didn't have this or that, if we just said it'll be indoors in a locked and, you know, secure location versus having the, we'll do this or that.
Right.
And then if we can do it in the ground floor rather than up on the roof, I mean, it's a little friction because you have to get on the elevator, so it's not a huge friction. But every little friction makes a difference, right? So if it's on the same level as the parking and if we can use that room that you had allocated but to put the storage in there.
Right.
So that it's easier for people to access the e-bikes, to loan them out from there. That would be, I think, a better solution if we can do that.
Okay.
The VMT mitigation we talked about. So I'd like to really understand how we're gonna do monitoring and enforcement. Somebody had mentioned the lights, light pollution from the upstairs units shining into the homes behind them. So even with the trees, have you given any thought to that? To not allowing any kind of outdoor bright lights on the second floors of the townhouses that shine, that would shine down? Like, are there any kind of mitigation there?
We have our dark sky, birth safe ordinance that would, that's intended to mitigate those issues that were brought up by many of the neighbors and yourself, Commissioner. So, you know, this project, it's conditioned to meet those standards as well. Both birth safe and the dark sky, downward-facing lights as an example and whatnot.
Okay.
Intensity as well.
So that would mitigate, so there wouldn't be any bright lights shining into their yards?
That's, the intention of the ordinance is to prevent that.
Okay. The other thing is, yeah, I kind of want to reiterate what some of the other commissioners have said. Put solar in if you can. I mean, I think that that's such a low-hanging fruit in a way. I mean, I think it would be a really great solution and it would be a really great example to set for other buildings. Are we, the townhouses, any plans to give them in level one or level two charging in the...
That would be standard.
Which one, level one or level two?
Level one, the two-twenty.
That's level two.
That's level two.
That's level two, excuse me, sorry.
Okay, so they will all have level two?
It's the two-twenty, yeah.
Excellent, great, thank you.
Okay, next.
So some other comments, you know, I would like to reemphasize. I prefer, you know, the e-bike storage and access, you know, at the ground floor, not, you know, on the rooftop because, you know, any friction, you know, we need to remove it. If I'm going out there and, you know, I have to choose between car and the e-bike, you know, if I had to go elevator and, you know, pick up the bike, I'm gonna go in the car, right?
Understand.
So we just have to make it easy, so that's one. And please consider solar because, you know, almost all the new homes, you know, everywhere that's getting built, you know, solar is default. And I would like to see, you know, solar on these buildings so that way, you know, it's neutral. And I really appreciate, you know, you guys, you know, working with the neighbors, right? And taking their consent, so that's good to see, you know, the developers working with neighbors. Also, thank you for your invitation to meet with me. But unfortunately, you know, I was not in town, so I was traveling. So I couldn't even access my email, so I couldn't respond, so my apologies. But I appreciate, you know, the invite, thank you.
Okay, did Josh, anything else?
Nope, but yeah, just to disclose that I did get to meet with the developer on sites about two weeks ago.
Okay, anyone else meet with the developer? I did not, I tried.
I did neither, I responded to an email, but...
But thank you for inviting us.
Yes.
So I had a, I had a couple of other comments, if that's okay. So the e-bike thing is interesting, there's been a lot of discussion on that. I think that for many things, the greatest benefit of... So this is actually, I mean, I had a prior term here on the planning commission. I don't remember us ever having one of these before, anybody who's chosen this. I suspect this is probably, it is a little bit of a check-off, you know, to meet, you know, to meet the VMT, you know, to address the VMT issue. I'll bet it's the most expensive one too. It's probably a lot more expensive than the bus passes that people aren't gonna use. So, you know, it's hard, particularly there, you're a long way from a bike, a long way from a bus stop. But I think the greatest benefit is actually, you know, so I work at a company that manufactures electric vehicles. And one of the things that really is the catalyst for more, you know, for these things becoming more popular is for people to try them. And so I think this is actually a great opportunity, you know, for people to try them. I think that that probably is the greatest, the greatest opportunity here. You know, that there's this fleet of these bikes here and that people will try them and try to go places and hopefully be successful at that. So I think that, I think it's a good thing. I actually probably would not, I don't, you know, given the size of the... Given the size of this project, I don't think that, you know, additional mitigation, I mean, what you're gonna find is that, yeah, maybe they're not used as much as you'd like to see for commutes and things like that. But, you know, I don't know that that's really, really high in value. That the program, the VMT mitigation program and monitoring program for big projects, you know, Google in North Bay Shore or Apple here in Cupertino, you know, they're pretty expensive plans, they have a lot of monitoring. They actually don't have really high penalties in case, I'm sure that they just would pay it off. I mean, you know, to the extent that they can, they would try to reduce the single, you know, single-driver car drives, but probably would just pay off, you know, the penalty. There was a comment about business parking. I think you actually, this proposal is exceeding the business parking requirement from the city by one spot.
By one spot, yeah.
You know, that's, I think that's good. It is important, I mean, I think it is important. There's some actually amazing examples in that area of things that are compliant and that kind of demonstrate that sometimes compliant is not enough spaces. But I think there's a good attempt here. I would, I would think a little bit about, I think that the landscape plan would come back for refinement when it, you know, as the project is going along. And make sure that there's an opportunity in particular to have feedback from the neighbors about the kinds of planting and the intention about what's gonna get planted there. You know, I think there's, I think there's a good intent here. It is challenging, I think, with the yards, you know, with the work that'll have to be done to put the yards in for the townhouses, you know, hopefully that won't affect the trees too negatively. I think finally, the other, the last comment I had really was that, you know, maybe this comes back a little to the VMT discussion. You know, I, I'm really, I'm a big supporter of making sure that we try to address, you know, try to address the traffic issues. However, in this particular case, I think that the benefit of the additional housing units greatly outweighs, you know, the kind of incremental miles. It's not, it's not a minor thing that it's considerably over the, you know, the impact study. But, you know, I think that the fact that you were able to, you know, bring these units, bring these, bring some additional units and actually exceed the requirement for BMR, those are all pluses. So I would actually not, not want to put greater restriction on with regard to, with regard to the VMT offset. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I think these VMT studies do not take into account the large percentage of work from home that we have now. So I'm wondering, you know, they may actually need it when you consider that it seems to be permanent that people are not going into the office, you know, every day. You know, they may be going in three days a week. But, yeah, it's, personally, I liked level of service better than VMT, but this is, this is what we have. So, anyone else before I ask one question of John?
Sorry, I had one more.
Okay.
The bike parking, the bike parking in front of the business? I was looking at the site map and it looked like you had some bike parking on the very north end of the property adjacent to the north edge. Is that where you're planning to put some of that bike parking?
North end, I have to refer back to the...
So you had some right near in front of the doors of the retail property? And then you had in the site map, like, yeah, right up there, on the very edge of the property.
It's meant to be a temporary parking for the retail. So if people ride their bike and come to this retail and do a shopping, those are meant to be for the retail to use.
Right, so no one will ever use that because it's far from the entrance? As a person who bikes in a lot of places, I can tell you, especially most of the time, people have e-bikes now, they're expensive, you know.
Right.
Our mayor has a two-thousand-dollar e-bike, she's never gonna park it there.
Okay. I think we can adjust the location if that, you know, outlier is a security concern. I think we can definitely adjust the landscape a little bit to fit it closer to the front of the property.
It needs to be close to the front door.
Sure.
So I know you have two there already, but maybe if you can adjust the landscaping to put all of them in that same location versus having that one kind of sitting by itself in the north end there, which is like basically rife for stealing over there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you know, if you look outside by the library and over to the left here, we've installed the secure bike parking called BikeKeep, which you use with your smartphone. So when you have that, well, you could still steal pieces of the bike, but you couldn't really steal the whole bike. You've got three, at least three cyclists on the planning commission, so that's why we are so discussing this.
I learned something today.
You know, so much. But yeah, Seema had a really good point. If you can't see your bike when you're in the store, you're probably not gonna ride your bike because the bike theft is just, you know, so endemic in this area.
It adds to security through every bike parking there.
Just move in front of the door.
Yeah, understand, yeah.
So John, at the beginning you mentioned the changes to the BMRs. You said seven and thirteen. Where do we, where do we put that when we're doing the approvals of the resolutions? Or is it already in there?
It's not in there right now, so, you know, each resolution has a cover, the planning commission cover to that. So when it goes back to, when it's assigned by the chair yourself, you would see the, any modifications to the conditions of approval. So those would be one.
And that's in, and that's in the development permit?
Development, correct, yes.
Okay, so that's the number two, okay.
And then any other, you know, you and I have been feverishly taking notes on comments and whatnot. So any other modifications you wanted to project or any of the conditions of approval would go in that cover, the planning commission cover page of the resolution as well as either an added condition or a modification.
Okay.
And if I may through the chair, we heard a lot of different things from individual planning commissioners. So if you would, you know, whoever makes the motion kind of comes up with one motion that we can put together in our resolutions.
Okay, and one more thing on bikes. You know, because, you know, the builder is, you know, these units will have an HOA, it really needs to be in the CCNR of the HOA that it requires the continued provision of these e-bikes. You know, I don't know, in perpetuity or until the last survivor of the Queen of England, you know, like they did in Florida.
Or the king.
I don't know how we put that in, into the, or where we put it. I guess it's in the development permit as well.
Yeah, so the development permit has a condition of approval that describes the CCNRs. We can add a bullet to that as well. You know, all draft CCNRs from the applicant comes to our city attorney's office for review.
So this is partly why I was asking for the monitoring. Because if the e-bike program doesn't work, it's like, we don't want to necessarily force you to keep it for perpetuity if it's not, you know, working, right? So if they, if they find some other measure works better, like, you know, carpool subsidies or, you know, free via shuttle tickets for everyone every month, you know, I think we need to be flexible. So that's where I think kind of the monitoring comes in.
Yeah, that's a good point. So maybe we can make a list of all the items we want to put in the resolution. So, yeah, I can keep a list. Right, so I've got the UL twenty-eight forty-nine.
I've got the e-bike storage on the ground floor.
Right, I have that one as well. E-bike secure, right?
Yeah, secure e-bike storage on the ground floor.
Okay.
Move the business bike parking in front of the door.
If I may through the chair, do you want to categorize these modifications? We can do a condition regarding bike improvements where we can list, you know, the storage of the e-bike. you know, the storage of the e-bikes as well as, you know, the location of bike parking. If that's better, if not, I mean, it's just an option I'm throwing out there.
I don't know exactly what you, what you mean. Are you saying like to put all the bike stuff together?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
They will all go into the environmental assessment resolution, so it might make sense to have.
Okay, so I have three things, the UL approval, the secure e-bike storage on the ground floor, the business bike parking in front of the units. In front of shops, right, in front of shops. The CCNR of the HOA requiring continued provision of the e-bikes. Does the VMT monitoring fall into that? Are we even allowed to do the VMT monitoring? I mean?
We can, what we could do is staff can work with Placeworks to come up with a, with a monitoring program. You know, I know that one of the commissioners, I think it was Commissioner Linska brought the example of Apple, how they have them submit a yearly report, you know, we could come up with something probably similar to that, you know, maybe scaled down from what, you know, Apple has to provide, but, you know, something similar to that factor.
But, I mean, Commissioner Linska had a, you know, good point that if, if no one uses the e-bikes and it doesn't reduce VMT, there's no point in making them, you know, continue it forever, you know, something else could be done instead perhaps.
I think, yeah, if we just say the monitoring to make sure that they're meeting their VMT targets, whichever way they, they get there, whether it's e-bikes or some other remediation.
So you would say don't put in the CCNR that they have to continue, you know, continue the provision of e-bikes?
Yeah, I'm not sure where the remediation, would that go in the CCNR?
So the CCNRs have to reflect the conditions attached to the project. So I think this specific modification will go in our EA, our mitigation monitoring program and any revisions of that. And then a CCNRs could, could be worded, again, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know the best way to do it. But I think the CCNRs would have to mitigate the condition of approval, which, and also the mitigation monitoring program. So it is, in and of itself would be flexible as it is. If it's written flexible in the EA, it would be flexible in the CCNRs as well.
So it would go in the EA, it sounds like.
I had just one point on the, when we were talking earlier, and I think when Terry was on, that for mitigating VMT, there's a list of things you choose from.
Right.
And the reason you have that list is because VMT is really new and we don't know what's going to work yet. So I think what would be good is if you were to find out through monitoring that the e-bikes aren't doing what you thought they, you'd hoped they would do, that you then select something else off of that list to have an alternate approach to meet the end goal that you want to meet and that hopefully the e-bikes will. But if they don't, we already have this list established to go back to.
Okay.
And we talked about rooftop solar.
Can you turn on your microphone?
The solar consideration, so.
Right. Are we allowed to mandate solar, Michael?
I believe the law requires that it be solar ready.
Just solar ready, but not actually providing the solar.
If I may through the mayor, they will do whatever the building code requires.
Right.
How about that?
You know, no, I mean, the thing is, when the builder installs solar on all the units, it's a lot cheaper than when each individual homeowner goes back and installs it individually.
Yeah, especially the townhomes, right? So it's much easier to do it at the time of construction.
Yeah, and I, and I would think that that would be reflected in the sale price as well, you know, but, you know, I could be wrong.
It's a missed opportunity, sure.
Through the chair, really quick, I, I've just got word that Terry McCracken from Placeworks has her hand up. I don't know if she wants to contribute anything regarding.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, hi, it's Terry again. I just wanted to point out that we did look up that the California Solar Mandate went into effect in January 2020 and they do, they are required to be solar. So.
So not just solar ready?
That's what we understand, yes.
Okay.
So, so, okay, so it's required?
Yeah. And I, if I could, while I have your attention, I also wanted to point out in the revised mitigation for the bike program, it does talk about having a survey and it's only good for five years and the survey is going to, to test the efficiency of the bike program if anybody's using it or not and then generate like what structure needs to be changed in the bike program based on its success or if nobody's using it. That's the last bullet of the mitigation measure for the bike program.
Okay, so that program would only run for five years and then it's not required to be, continue? Or it's required to continue if it shows it works?
Right. So it talks about running for five years and then doing surveys along the way and then adjusting it. If the annual e-bike program survey generates the need for more bikes, then they may buy more bikes. It doesn't really say if it, if it doesn't work what they will do, but it's just talking about, really, I think it's banking on it. Will we be successful? It's written positive.
But that's two different things, right? So whether the e-bike program is successful or not is just not the same thing as meeting the VMT targets, right?
Right. So, yeah, I agree with John. We can work on the transportation coordinator having a role for monitoring. And I think we can also adjust the survey language that we already have in the mitigation measure to meet what, what you're asking for.
Okay, yeah. And as David pointed out, you know, yes, it would be nice to meet the VMT, but providing this housing is, you know, probably worth a little extra VMT if that even happens, considering all this was set up before work from home became a thing.
So then that should make it simpler for them.
Right. Yeah, so for Placeworks, did, did they ever consider, you know, the work from home when they're evaluating VMT or is that, that never changed because they believe work from home is going away or what?
I think the way that we have treated work from home at this point is we don't have any evidence. We only, it's only, nobody has any actual data collected on it. And so we've been using like pre-COVID standards and we switched. The technical reports that we're doing now in 2023 baseline are starting to collect new data based on current conditions. But this technical report came in during, during when it was all happening.
Right. So what does that new data show?
Well, I don't have any of it, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, you just started. I thought, I thought you had been collecting it for two years.
Yeah, in 2023, we're looking at that. I will point out that this project does generate fewer daily trips than existing conditions.
Right, yeah, I did see that. Yeah.
That's not a standard for measuring VMT, but it is, it was in the past, so.
Right. Oh, it's no longer a standard because I think they use that for, what, what's the name of the part that replaced the Oaks? Westport?
Yeah, it is in the OPR guidelines, but I don't think it got adopted as a city's threshold.
I see, okay. All right. Anybody else before we move to start the resolutions? Okay. All right, who wants to start the motions? Or do you want to have a break first? We've been going for, no, no breaks. Okay. Okay, so I'll go first. I don't think we have anything extra for the MND, do we? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we adopt the mitigated negative declaration EA 2022-005.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, let's vote with our lights.
The motion carries unanimously.
If I may through the chair.
Yes.
When you adopted the EA, did you want to make changes to the e-bike monitoring and such that you just mentioned? Was that part of the motion?
Oh, I wasn't sure if that was supposed to be part of the development permit or?
It was part of the, the e-bike program is part of the mitigation measures.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So how do we, how do we back that up?
I would vote again.
Huh?
You could vote again.
Okay, so, all right, I will make a motion. We adopt the MND EA 2022-005 with the following changes. The e-bikes must be UL 2849 certified. The e-bike storage should be secure and on the ground floor. Indoors. The bike parking for the businesses should be in front of the shops. And do we need to put anything else for the monitoring of the VMT or is that kind of built in? That's, that's already?
The monitoring would be part of the EA.
Right.
So some sort of, so staff will come up with the monitoring?
Right.
We'll work with the.
Okay, staff will come up with a monitoring program to see the success or failure of the VMT measures that are adopted.
That will last for five years or how long?
I think that's already in there for five years.
Currently it's five years, but if, you know, we could, I mean, what do you think, Pew, we could go as, as long as you suggest or as long as the VMT is met?
For Apple, I believe that we were going to be monitoring for five years. And if they had three straight years where they met their trip thresholds, we would not continue the monitoring. But if they didn't, then they would kind of go back in a loop. But we can talk to Placeworks and figure out what that might be for a project this size and something that would be more appropriate. Right, right.
Okay, so I think we, that was it then, right? Okay. All right, let's revote on that, just so we can add those.
The motion as modified carries unanimously.
Okay. So the next motion is to approve the development permit, DP 2021-002. And the modifications there were for the BMR, correct, John? Item seven and 13?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
So we're deleting 13 and modifying seven to, basically a combination of 13 in there.
Okay, do we need to explicitly state those here or not? Okay.
Can we say per your?
Per staff, yeah.
Per, per the report.
Okay, right, per your report, okay. Was there anything else anyone had for the development permit? I don't believe so. Okay, so we can vote on that.
I'll second it.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
It was sharp and fun.
Yes, okay. Thank you, David, for keeping me.
The motion as modified carries unanimously.
Okay, how about someone else make a motion now?
Sure, I'll do that. To approve the architectural and site approval permit ASA 2021-004. Maybe we'll do the use permit, too. Do you want to do that or do we want to do them all separately?
I think we better do them separately.
Okay. One recommendation through the chair, I know there was a concern about the retail spaces. Do you want to add a condition to the ASA that all retail spaces be separately marked from residential to ensure that, you know, there's, you know, that those are just similar to what we did with the VP1 where we, we conditioned it to, that those 10 spaces on that site were specifically marked commercial for the, for the future bike park, oh, so the bike shop or whatever. We could potentially do the same thing on this one if the concern is to maintain the 31 spaces for retail. I'm getting a head shake now, so it's a suggestion out there. If that's a concern, that's one way to address it.
Me maintaining the parking spaces?
Mark the spaces so that they're marked commercial as opposed to being also occupied by residential.
Why complicate things?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that, that would be then, the motion is to adopt that as submitted?
Yes, okay, I'll second. Vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Seema, go. So you're on, you're on number four, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve the use permit, U-2021-001 as submitted.
I'll second it.
Okay, vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Mooney.
Okay, I make the motion to approve the, on this one. I'll make the motion to approve the use permit, U.
No, the tentative map.
I make the motion to approve the tentative map TM 2021-003.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, to Jess, how about, you want to do the last one?
Sure.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the chair removal permit, TR-2022-006.
I second it.
Okay, vote with your lights.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. So congratulations and.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, you heard a lot about bikes today. I hope we can count, we can count on you on this. So, yeah, we look forward. When do you expect to start construction?
Depends on the plan check process and, and how fast we can produce those plans. So hopefully sometime next year.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay.
I also just want to say really nicely put together plans, very impressive. So kudos on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so we are on to old business, none, new business, none. We're on to staffing commission reports. Any staff reports?
Staff does not have any additional reports.
Okay, commission reports. Mooney, no, no, no. Okay, I don't have anything. Future agenda setting, does anyone have any items that they would like to see put on a future agenda? Okay. Okay. Madam City Clerk, were there any hands raised or blue cards for staffing commission reports or future agenda setting?
No, Chair.
Okay. All right, I think we, what? And I'm sorry, Jennifer, what?
She's asking if she, if the public can comment on those, on those items.
Yeah, Michael, can the public comment on those items?
Well, it's up to you, Chair, but typically it's not agendaized and then we don't seek public comment on, no, no items are on the agenda.
Okay, all right, so no. All right, so seeing nothing else, I guess we can adjourn. Everyone have a good night.